Committee on Public Safety. It is a pleasure and honor to be out at Hibernian Hall with my colleagues. Today, we are having a city council hearing, docket 1095. And this is a city council meeting. It's different in that we are in the community and not where we typically have our meetings and our hearings at City Hall. Today, we have a hearing to talk about the increase in gun violence in the city. We have a panel here of our police department, StreetSafe, and BCYF. And then, we're going to open it up to the public. We want to talk with you. We want to hear from you. So, the kind of panel portion of this hearing is very abbreviated. We want to really hear from the people who have come here today. So, if you'd like to talk, if you'd like to testify, there are sign-up sheets at that table in the front where you came in. We have some up here. We'll be getting others handed to us. And you will be invited to testify and speak for two minutes. And we look forward to hearing from you. I'm going to make a brief statement, and then, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues for their opening statement. We're also going to recognize people as they come in. I will do that in a moment. So, let me just start by saying this. Yesterday, someone asked me if we're going to have another city council hearing on violence, as if this is what we do when there is violence. And they kind of rolled their eyes when they said it, that, "Oh, yeah, you're going to have another hearing, and nothing's going to change." Well, first of all, I don't believe that. But, second of all, show me a community that is silent after a shooting. Show me a community that is silent after a spike in violence, and I'll show you a community that has a real problem. Yeah, we're going to come together every time, and we need to. And this is part of that. But what I hope we get out of this that is different are real solutions. Real solutions about how we move forward in the short term, in the midterm, and in the long term. The reason why I called this hearing, asked my colleagues to join me, and all of you, is because there's an increase in violence in our city that should be intolerable for all of us. There's been an increase by 20% in shootings since last year. And there's been an increase by 30% in homicides since last year. There's been an increase of over 80% in deaths by shootings in our city since last year. And no one was satisfied with where we were last year. We're certainly not satisfied with an increase. So, when I say there's an increase, it's not just the increase that we should be concerned about. To the extent one child goes to sleep scared in this city, we're a lesser city for it. And certainly, to the extent that one child is shot, we're certainly a less city for it. So, that is why I called this hearing, to get us together, to bring us together in search of solutions and in search of remedies that we can come up with together as a community, as a city. I'd like to turn this over to the co-chair of what will soon be a working group that will meet after this hearing. We can't -- one thing we do have to change is not just have a hearing. We need to meet, and meet, and meet again. And so, we will form a working group. And Councilor Jackson has agreed to co-chair that working group with me around gun violence. And we will have our next meeting in early August. We will be able to let you know exactly when that meeting is soon. And it will be posted. But I would like to, at this point, turn over for comment to my colleague, Councilor Tito Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I want to acknowledge some of the folks that I see in the room. I think what's significant about this hearing and what's significant about what we're doing is that we can't do this work in a vacuum. We can't do it in a bubble. And actually, as adults, we actually need to model the behavior that we want to see in our young people. We can't fight over turf. We can't fight over resources. We can't fight over awards and all of those things and ask our young people to put the guns down and not fight over turf, not fight over acknowledgement. So, I want to acknowledge some of the many groups in the room. Score for More, I see Liz. They did a wonderful Peace Basketball Tournament this weekend. I see folks from StreetSafe, a lot of folks from StreetSafe, the Boston Street Worker Program, Peace Boston. I see Cindy, the Ten Point Coalition. I see Rufus. And I see many ministers in the room. The solution is going to be closest -- bringing those folks who are closest to the problem to the table on a regular basis, having us put our weapons down. Oftentimes, our weapons are words. Oftentimes, our weapons are blogs and the pen. And oftentimes, our weapons are us pointing fingers at each other of blame. While we do that, our young people are dying. While we do that, our young people are in trauma. While we do that, we have about 50% of the shootings that we're seeing are young men fighting over young women. And we have to be real and have real talk about actually what is happening here. Much of this actually is happening outside of a drug trade. A lot of times, people think that's what's going on. Well, if you think that's what's going on, you might need to be updated in terms of what's actually going on in our neighborhood, in our community. The outcomes that we need, some of them have come forward. We had 55 people graduate in the academy that just came out, I believe, last week. And we were able to work with the police department. I'm actually happy to announce that all 55 of those police officers will be going to B-2, B-3, and C-11. And so, all of those officers will actually be going into our neighborhoods and community. My demand and request will be that they actually stay there, and we're still working on that aspect of it. And so, again, it is my intention to be here, to have this conversation, and to continue to have this conversation. We all just got out of the budget cycle. We do that every single year, and we know it's something that's important. This is just as important as the things that happen on the budget cycle. Because for every child that we lose, we lose a part of our future in the city of Boston. So, I'm very happy to be here, looking forward to hearing all of the great work that people are doing here in this community. And I'll just note that I think it's significant that we have the One Fund. I think it's significant that we deal with the trauma issues that happened during the bombing. But we need to make sure that the lives of the children on Blue Hill Ave are valued the same as the lives of the children that are on Boylston Street. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the co-chair of the Public Safety Committee, the vice chair of the Public Safety Committee, Councilor Presley, to go next.
I really don't have much of a statement except to just say thank you. Thank you for what so many of you do on the front lines every day in the peace movement. I want to acknowledge the young people that are in this room. I'm so proud of them, and I think the full story of them is not told often enough. And I'm so tired of our young people being vilified and demonized, as if they spontaneously combust and are suddenly one day violent, when we live in a violent culture. We are perpetrators of violence. We are victims of violence. We are consumers of violence. And violence begats violence. And so, all of us need to be committed to breaking every single form of violence. So, I just want to say thank you for all of your being here. The best efforts are those that are community-driven and government-endorsed. I'm looking forward to being in continued collaboration and partnership with all of you. And I'm very encouraged to know that there will be an effort outside of this, because it's not good enough for us to come together in a space like this but not stay together. We have to be vigilant in this peace movement. So, thank you very much, and I look forward to hearing from all of you.
Good evening. I am John Connolly, one of your Boston City Councilors-at-Large. I want to thank the chair and the two vice chairs for convening this very important hearing. I want to apologize in advance. I had three conflicts booked well in advance, and so, I'm going to have to head out early. But I do want to just say I have a member of my staff, Rainice Salter's here, who will be taking careful notes on all of the testimony. I will go back and watch the testimony on video myself to make sure that I am listening to what people have to say on this very important issue. And I think that's what's most important, how we feel impacted in our personal lives on a daily basis by violence and gun violence specifically, and what we see as those solutions. And I'll just say, on a personal level, I spent the better part of this past school year dropping my daughter at the Trotter School every morning on Humboldt Ave. And it takes on a new meaning as a parent when you drop your daughter at this wonderful school. And yet, we're multiple times during the year reading about shootings and stabbings happening within a stone's throw of the school. And to think of the impact on all of the young people who walk down Humboldt Ave on a regular basis, and all of the families, and all of the people living there when any one of these incidents happens. And what's happening is we're traumatizing an entire community, and we're traumatizing an entire generation, and desensitizing people to violence and making it an expectation. And that's what we really need to get at and get under it. And I love all of the strong gun control legislation, and I'm a strong supporter of it. But we've got to get underneath this. It's about how we deal with addiction, mental health, trauma response. It's about how we create jobs and make sure that we're giving opportunity to young people. Those are the ways that we're going to truly end violence with a comprehensive plan aimed at going block by block, house by house, family by family, and creating a culture of opportunity for everyone. That's what we've got to do to get underneath this gun violence issue and truly solve it in the long run. I will look forward to reviewing everyone's comments, thoughts, and ideas on how we solve this and solve this together. And again, my thanks to the chair and the vice chairs for convening this incredibly important hearing. Thank you.
Matt, did you have a comment? Briefly, yes. Good evening, folks. My name is Matt O'Malley. I'm the District 6 City Councilor, proudly representing Jamaica Plain, West Roxbury, a little bit of Rosendale, the back of Mission Hill, and a little bit of Roxbury. I just wanted to briefly thank our chair, our vice chair, my colleagues who are here, members of the Boston Police Department, other stakeholders, and most of all, all of you. I'm looking around this room, and I see countless people that I've worked with, people who have made this, making Boston a safer, more healthy city. Their life's work, and it's great to be with all of you this evening. In the first six months of the year, we had over 100 shootings, and that was through the end of June, which did not include the summer months. And we all know that as the temperature rises, so too does the number of violent incidents in the city. We are here tonight to figure out ways that we can combat that, figure out what is working. And we know through the people in this room and elsewhere that there are a lot of good things happening. But we also need to figure out where there are deficiencies and what we could be doing to work smarter, to work harder. When we talk about issues like reentry programming, like dual diagnosis programming for drug treatment, addiction, and recovery, gun buyback programs, there's so many tools that we have that have worked in the past, some things that we're doing right. The street workers, the youth workers have done yeoman's work in my district and beyond, and just really figure out how we're going to ensure that the tragedies that occur and have occurred, we're able to limit and eventually eradicate. Every shooting in the city affects every neighborhood, every street, every block, every family in the city. And we are here to listen, to figure out what's working and what we can do better going forward to make sure that so many fewer lives are impacted. So, thank you very much, and look forward to this hearing as well as subsequent working sessions and a working group that will be convened after. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Felix Roy. I have the honor of being one of your at-large city councilors. And I appreciate all of you for being here, all of the different organizations that help make this hearing happen. And I also appreciate the lead sponsor, Councilor Jackson, for his work on this hearing. You know, I have a number of questions that I really think we really got to get to the bottom of, like, where does that gun come from? I've been in every neighborhood in the city, and I haven't found a gun manufacturer yet. So, I know we don't make them. And I think our kids can do wonderful things. I haven't seen the one who knows how to make a gun. But it's much too easy to get your hands on one. And I think we have to start looking at, where does that gun come from? In the short term, we have to look at safe havens in our neighborhoods, particularly our neighborhoods most impacted by gun violence, where young people can go and they know they're safe. You know, I'd much rather work with the police to prevent a shooting than have to call them after a shooting. And we have to start thinking in the short term, how do we prevent this? How do we stop it? But in the long term, we have to understand that the biggest perpetrator of violence in our communities is, in fact, poverty and lack of opportunities. Right? When a young person feels most loved in a gang, they're doing a school, we're asking for trouble. And when it's easier to get a gun than it is to get a job, we're asking for trouble. And I think that's our long-term focus. In the short term, we've got to look at where those guns are coming from. We have to create safe places for our young people to be in. And in the long term, we have to take a real proactive approach in attacking poverty and seeing poverty as the enemy and not people as bad people. Thank you.
Thank you all. We just -- there's some people who have joined us that we want to make sure we're recognizing. Candace Healy is here, from Congressman Capuano's office. Just want to acknowledge you being here. Thank you. Also, Charles Clemmons is here. He's a candidate for mayor, and good to see you, Charles. Representatives from Mothers for Justice are here. Representatives from the NAACP are here. Representatives from Peace Boston, Cindy Diggs is here. We have Project Hip Hop here. And, you know, I'm happy if I missed anyone. I'd love to hear, you know, from people. We'll make sure we give you a shout-out for being here. We have community activists who are here, which is very important. We have Gareth Saunders, former city councilor. Gareth Saunders is here. Good to see you, Gareth. And let's get into the panel, and I'll be able to fill that in as we go. So, Superintendent Gross, very good to see you. Why don't we start with you? And if you could introduce yourself and anyone else who might be testifying alongside with you. Do appreciate you being here, and we appreciate your work in our community. You're a trusted partner in the work that we do, and we're glad that you're here. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. And I appreciate you holding this meeting along with Tito, because this is what's needed, us working together. That's what's going to solve the problem. As well, I'm appreciative of our partnership. I am Superintendent William G. Gross. I'm the night commander, a 30-year veteran of the Boston Police Department. Before I go any further, let me thank the seniors in the room who made it possible for me to be here, because I was definitely raised by the community. To my left is Deputy Superintendent Kelly Ne, who is in charge of the Bureau of Investigative Services. And we have Detective Crespo here as well, part of the Bureau of Investigative Services. Folks, it is an honor to see all of you here together. There's some folks that don't think that people from the community care about anything except discussing fashion, sports, or good gossip. Let's just show those folks that we're here as a community, and we're going to make that difference, and we're going to stop the gun violence. The Boston Police Department, led by Commissioner Davis, our mission is community policing. Our mission is to heal the family units with our constituency here. You have the best team that I've seen in this city in a long time. You have StreetSafe, Boston Center for Youth and Family, committed councilors who I see out there. Every time I'm at a scene, I usually see them at a scene or in a meeting to help us come together and stop this senseless violence. I would also like to thank the youth in this room. We don't hear from you enough. I met youth from the NAACP. It was a pleasure speaking to you. But back to what we're all here for, gun violence. How are we going to fix this violence? The onus isn't solely on the police or any one individual up here. The way that we're going to fix this violence is for all of us to work together and work through any constructive criticism, okay? We are definitely going to have to take the village mentality, because that village mentality is what has made me successful and the reason why I'm here today. When my mother wasn't around, other people in the community stepped up and watched her back by watching her children, and she did likewise. That's something we need to get back to. And I just hope everyone in this room would take advantage of the partnership that you see before you here, and know your self-worth, and that your word counts, your input counts, and that's what's going to make a difference. As you see on the screen before you, you have the city of Boston, Boston Police Department's statistics on gun violence from January 1st to July 8th. I am going to turn it over now to Deputy Superintendent -- excuse me, Deputy Superintendent Ne, and she will go over the statistics for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Kelly Ne. I'm a deputy superintendent. I'm with the Bureau of Investigative Services. I have -- that work for me, almost every detective in this city. So, when a crime is committed and the follow-up is being done by detectives, that comes under the purview of the Investigative Services Division. So, we do have some statistics. These go back to 2009, and I don't know who's --
Do you want the clicker?
That would be great.
Okay.
And I just want you to know that we take this uptick in violence, in this firearm-related violence, as seriously as you do. We're very concerned about it. We want to be part of the solution. We look forward to hearing from you. Anything that we can do in partnership with you and the councilors on this issue, we're delighted and willing to participate in. So, please, don't be shy with your suggestions. Like Councilor Ross said, or when Councilor Jackson said, we have put all the new recruits out into the neighborhoods that are directly affected by these numbers, and we're hoping that they will have a direct impact on the violence that we'll be showing you. Okay, do we --
I think if you go to the right arrow, yeah.
All right. These are the citywide shootings. Now, this is from January 1st to July 8th, and it goes back to 2009. So, you can see -- I'm not going to read these numbers to you. You can all see it. So, in 2009, we did seem to have a spike. 2013, we're on track with a similar spike. 2010, I wish I knew what the solution was back then. We had those numbers so low. So, the top number is the non-fatal shootings, and the fatal shootings, which would be homicides, are the numbers below that. Just a little sidebar, we have revamped our homicide unit. We're exploring new protocols to try to make it more effective, to get more information from the neighborhoods and stuff. So, I can explain that later if anyone's interested in it. So, this is the citywide shooting hotspots. It's a five-year overview. So, the locations highlighted in red, which are what Councilor Jackson referred to as District 2, which is Roxbury here, District 3 is Matapan, and District C-11 is in Dorchester. Those consistently, over the past five years, have been our hotspots for firearm-related This is -- this map is plotting every individual incident, all right? So, that's why it's pretty congested. So, if you go back here, it clusters it in. So, that's what we identify as the hotspots. And this is identifying every particular incident along the city. And these are our five-year homicide -- these are the locations of the homicide. Again, this is every individual incident, and I believe the next slide will show the -- all right, these are our 2013 shootings. So, as you can see, folks, the trend year to year is usually the same neighborhoods. We do try to put an awful lot of resources. We have great partnerships with StreetSafe and the street workers from BCYF. We work very closely with the Boston Public Health Commission, the District Attorney's Office, to try to bring justice to most of these families, as many families as we can when we're trying to solve these cases.
That's it.
Huh? That's it? I do have some statistics on our firearm arrests. I don't know if you've got those slides.
I don't think we did.
Do you mind if I --
No, yeah. If you could read them, that would be great. Yeah, thank you.
So, our firearm arrests, all right? In 2009 -- I apologize that you didn't get this, Councilor. In 2009, for the whole year, we made 300 -- I'm sorry, to July 8th, same time period. In 2009, when you saw a big spike in firearm-related violence, we had 322 firearm-related arrests. Same time period, 2010, it was 278. 2011, 236. 2012, 174. This year, for 2013, we have 227 firearm-related arrests. You know, somebody committing an armed robbery, a shooting, arrested with a firearm. And I'll just break down a little bit. For the guns that we've seized, we've seized 359 guns off the city streets just in Boston this year. That's 359. Of those, 321 were handguns or pistols. Most of the guns that we can trace seem to come back to, as a result, they've been stolen from someone, stolen, and they make their way into the city of Boston. Also, people use what's called a straw purchaser. People can go to states where it's easier, the gun violence, the gun laws aren't as stringent as Massachusetts. It's very difficult to buy a gun lawfully in Massachusetts. So, a straw purchaser is somebody who has a residence, a legal residence, in a state that might be a little bit more lax in their laws. You know, New Hampshire, there's some states down in the South, and people might be able to go in and buy one gun a week. And then, those guns get turned over to friends, family, relatives. College students might do it down in some of these states to make a little extra money. So, like I said, we had 321 handguns seized this year, 19 shotguns, and 19 rifles. So, I'm going to be here with Superintendent Gross, answer any questions that you have. Thank you very much for inviting us and letting us be a part of this, and we really look forward to helping with the solution.
Thank you. We're going to hear from a couple of our partners, but I just want to, before we get too far off, is there any other insight, either Superintendent or Deputy, that you can give us as to why there's been an increase, 20% of the shootings or 30% of the homicides? I mean, obviously, it's a complex answer, right? I mean, it's easier to ask the question than -- but from your vantage, from the Boston Police Department, what can you tell us?
Well, some of the shootings occur because of existing beefs, so to speak. So, you have various gangs throughout the city of Boston, and, you know, they've had beefs that have been going on for years, generationally. So, often, we see conflicts because of those relationships between the gangs. As Councilor Jackson alluded to earlier, there are a lot of shootings over relationships. I go out with someone, I break up with them, they go out with someone else. Unfortunately, there's shootings involving the relationships between men and women and some of our young teens out there. And then, there is social media. There's a lot of shootings over social media. I'll come on your turf. I'll do something on your turf, disrespectful, and I'll post it on Facebook or YouTube. And some of our youth who take issue with that, they pick up a gun, and instead of exercising conflict resolution, there's gun violence. And then, as a result of that, there's retaliation. So, that's just to give you just some of the examples. I'll turn that over to you.
Another thing that we're kind of working on is the late-night parties. We've had some horrific acts of violence. You're probably all aware of the triple shooting on Intervale Street. That was a late-night party, a pay party. It's not a family barbecue or anything like that. These are parties that people are being paid to host. We have a hotline. I was in because they quickly do ---------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------- --[1786.73]
It gets resurfaced again. So oftentimes, we're trying to work with partners to try to eliminate issues before they spark back up. And right now, we're seeing an epidemic of anniversaries, where, you know, a lot of retaliatory is coming on the heels of an anniversary of a young person's death. And unfortunately, you know, really collectively, I think, really the larger conversation is how do we actually mobilize around some of those core deeply embedded issues? And I think just overall, I think for BCYF, it's really about focusing on the positive things that we can do. I mean, this year, we've employed over 400 young people on a variety of different programs, a lot of variety of different services. Again, we're the human services piece, so we run summer camp programs throughout the city. You know, we run any level of family-based programming in 35 community centers throughout the city. So hopefully today, I can be a part of the constructive conversation and answer any questions.
We also have with us the, I think maybe now, ask the Public Health Commission who's here, I think Catherine Fine, if you could speak to why you're seeing an increase in violence, in your opinion, from the healthcare perspective? And if you could speak into the microphone?
If you could speak into the microphone, yes. You know, I think we are, I also wanted to, if it's okay, go over with you a couple of kind of strategies that we have in place, because as, is this not on? I also wanted to speak a little bit about... Ed, to the rescue. This is how we partner in the city of Boston. Yeah. I will highlight a couple of places where we're moving pretty quickly to address some of the problems, but also wanted to highlight some of the strategies and why public health is at the table with our...
Just keep going, it's all right.
Why public health is at the table with some of these, with some of our important colleagues at the Police Department, Boston Center for Youth and Families, and also our jobs and employment partners. We also think it's critically important, when we think about violence prevention, we cannot do this work on our own here at the city or as organizations, but we need to engage residents, as we're doing this evening, in what it means to prevent violence in your neighborhood and in our own communities. So we have a couple of approaches that we, that we kind of partner with both city and community organizations. One is to work with shooting and stabbing victims, and with individuals who we think are at particularly high risk of being gunshot or perpetrating gun violence. And we do that through a program at Boston Medical Center, where every person who comes through that emergency department with a penetrating injury, whether it's a shooting victim or a stabbing victim, gets immediately intensive, obviously, medical treatment, but gets immediately connected to advocates and to family support coordinators. What we're seeing in the last couple of months is that increasing numbers of young women are coming in, either as witnesses to violent events or as victims themselves. These young women have been in relationships with the men who are victims, either in a current relationship, intimate relationship, or they are the mothers of the young men who have been victims, young children. So there's an automatic exposure there that we really need to attend to very quickly. There's a child who might be exposed to violence, there's a young woman who might be completely destabilized by the incident, and there's also a young man in that constellation. So what we are, have been discussing doing, and we're trying to allocate funds, is to partner now child and maternal nurses in the hospital to make sure, and case managers and advocates, that while we're attending to the victim of violence, we're also making sure that we're wrapping services around any kind of collateral family members who might be there. So that's, I think, what we're doing sort of in the immediate short term. We also think, as a public health department, that, you know, you have to, you can't, we have to start, be consistent about our prevention approaches, and we have to work with young children early around skill development to be able to stand up for themselves, stand up for others, address conflict, develop empathy skills, and all of that can happen in the school system. So we've partnered this year for the first time with the Boston Public Schools. We're in 23 public schools this year. We've trained over 700 teachers in social-emotional learning curriculums, and we've reached about 3,500 students in kindergarten through 5th grade. So these skills both help children succeed academically, but they also help ensure that we have an environment in the classroom where there's less discipline, there's less behavior problems. We see that these behaviors, positive behaviors, persist at home, and we see that they can persist as children sort of grow up. So we just want to make sure that as we're attending kind of to the immediate needs as a result of gun violence, that we're also putting appropriate emphasis on helping young children develop skills that are important as they navigate the neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you. Finally, Street Safe from the Boston Foundation is here. Ed, if you could introduce yourself and anyone from your team you want to introduce. Really appreciate you being here and any of your testimony.
Thank you. I'm Ed Powell, the Executive Director of Street Safe Boston. I'd like to acknowledge Conan Harris, who is our street worker manager. I'd like to acknowledge Martha Rivera, who's our service delivery manager. And there are several street workers from the Street Safe program. I see Alan, I see Leroy, I see my buddy Sam, which is not his real name, but I call him that. Just real quick, Street Safe is an initiative of the Boston Foundation, and it was conceived to address the problem of gang-motivated gun violence, which occurs in a very small area of the city, less than four miles, five neighborhoods, mostly along what we call the Blue Hill Ave corridor. And Street Safe was developed as a result of research that was done by Harvard University. And that research compiled shooting data from the Boston Police Department from a two-year period prior to the launch of Street Safe. And that data allowed us to target for intervention 20 gangs that were historically the most active gangs in the city. We have two core strategies at Street Safe. One is street-level intervention, where we have street workers whose job is to go out, connect with youth who are in these gangs, to go find the impact players, develop relationships with them, mentor them, and try to get them to consider another reality. And once we're able to get them to consider another reality, that's when we implement our second core strategy, where we have program coordinators or case managers, if you will, who connect them to services that meet their basic needs. We are undergoing ongoing vigorous, rigorous evaluation by Harvard University, so that we can find out what our impact is on any violence reductions in the city, and to learn enough so that we will be able to really add something to the field of social science when it comes to street-level intervention. One of the questions that I have been asked recently is, what services are needed? And people want to approach this like, there is one or two things that we can do, and it will resolve this issue, and it's really not. Jobs, yes, we need jobs, but when your conflict is a block away and you can't get to a job, that's not going to help you. Housing, some of the hidden homeless population exist in these young people who are couch-surfing and involved in gang activities. Parenting skills and mentoring, we need to teach young men how to be men first and fathers second. Trauma and mental health care, we've got young people who are in wartime situations, and you need counseling around that particular trauma. And there's some mental health care issues and some educational issues that have gone undiagnosed. These are some of the things that we're looking at, and there's no one answer. There are a lot of, there's a lot of new learning, though, over the past few years that we all are party to. And what we should revisit is a comprehensive citywide plan that incorporates the best measurable practices over the past few years, and places them under one umbrella with shared outcomes. Thank you.
Ed, thank you. I want to get right into testimony. So if my colleagues up here, just one question each, very quick, clarifying question, give people an opportunity. Are you ready with one? You want me to come back? You got one?
I guess my one question is around measurement. What do you use as your measurement tool in terms of outcomes relative to any of your programs? I know that there's a diversity in terms of the programs, but my question has always been, with the amount of funding, and we put funding in a bunch of different areas, how do we actually measure outcomes relative to the young people we're dealing with? How many touchpoints do we have? How many referrals do we have? And where do these young people end up? And as noted, many of the people that we're talking about aren't living in a cool lifestyle. Many of them are actually homeless, they're couch-surfing, and some of the conversations that I've had with street workers is that many street workers, on a regular basis, are taking money out of their pocket to actually feed people. Right? And so, and I will say it again, that many street workers who, and that's a budgetary question on our side, do we actually have budget to do what we're supposed to do? Because many street workers, on a regular basis, are actually taking their own money out of their pocket to feed these young men, oftentimes. So I would love to hear, in terms of the actual demonstrable outcomes, how do you measure that? I'm talking about all of the programs that we're talking about. If we can, the Street Safe president, the Police Department, all, I think there has to be some type of measurement tool and outcome-based thought in terms of, we put dollars, resources, people on this issue, and then what ends up happening on the other end? And I understand, this is not a, these aren't programs where there's going to be 100% pass rate or 100% of people going to programs, but the question is, where are we at in terms of tracking all of these programs?
Anyone like to respond?
Our major form of measurement is reduction in shootings among the groups that we work with. That's where we measure success. Again, we're going through an evaluation from Harvard University's Kennedy School of Government. What we've done is, there's a two-year baseline period before the launch of Street Safe. And again, through BPD data, we measured the number of shootings that occurred among the 20 groups that we work with. Every year, we get an interim report, and in that interim report, it tells us the number of shootings that have occurred among the groups that we work with, victimizations and perpetrations. Now, most street worker programs in the country, like Chicago's ceasefire program, what happens is, they insert themselves in an area, and they say, well, because we were there, shootings went down. It's more than that. There are a lot of efforts that are taking place. And in this evaluation that is being done on Street Safe, it's going to take into account arrests, it's going to take into account incarcerations and other services that are taking place in the community, so that we can get a true picture of what our impact is. We don't know specifically what the Street Safe impact is. We can tell you that at the end of our last full program year, which ran from July 1st of last year to June 30th of this year, that shootings among our groups, the groups we work with, were down 31%, 31 and a half percent. We don't have a full year's worth of data now, and we have data up until March, I'm sorry, May of this year. And that data from May, from last program year to now, says that the shootings have been down among the targeted groups that we work with about the same. But again, that's in a 10 and a half month period, so, and we know that a lot of things have happened since May. And again, area-level violence, you can't get a true picture of, with a street worker program right now, a true picture of, you know, our impact. But again, one of the great things about this program is, we are trying to learn every day. We won't continue to do things that are ineffective if we think we can improve on them. And a lot of that goes to the strategy that takes place in the room with Conan and his team, as I see them bouncing off ideas every single day as to how we can be better about, you know, addressing conflicts in the city. Thank you.
You don't have to, don't answer the question if you don't feel like you have an answer, but if anyone else would like to add to that of how you measure success?
I'm just going to say briefly, we are constantly tracking the number of people served, the number of folks that we get connected to services, particularly when it's about gun violence. We're looking at behavioral health support, we're looking at employment, we're looking at education. In terms of knowing the big-picture outcomes, so are people kind of continuing to thrive beyond the time of the intervention? We have to pair that with an evaluation that, like Ed Powell said, you know, something like an academic institution, and we've done that for most of the programs and the ones that I started to describe earlier. So we have, we're constantly tracking, are we making progress with folks and with clients and with communities, particularly in our community organizing strategies? But then, we are kind of investing in studies to make sure that we are actually making an impact, and should these be strategies that we continue to invest in?
Thank you. Deputy?
Thank you. Well, one of the ways that we measure the outcomes of successes are what you see here, through our statistics that are compiled through your police reports, statistics that are reported from our judicial system as well, as pertains to how many individuals are arrested, arrested on probation, and back to us, firearm reductions, firearm increases in various neighborhoods. Also, another measurement is, sometimes you don't have arrests in neighborhoods that were historically, you had a lot of arrests in. And why is that so? You'll find out, that's through many of our partnerships that were created through our community service officers and officers, neighborhood watches, getting people involved. If they see something, they say something. So another measurement of success is the input that we get back from the community on what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong. And if we're doing something wrong, we work together to fix it. All right? So it's just not quantified in numbers, it's quantified in conversations we have with the community, clergy, probation, our city counselors. That's the true measurement, the feedback on what each individual in each neighborhood feels is important about their quality of life and issues. feels is important about their quality of life and issues.
I think for BCYF, I think on two different levels, I think to Ed's point, definitely based on levels of violence in a particular neighborhood. But on average, I probably get about 35 or 40 referrals a week from schools, from probation officers, from church organizations. It's how fast do we respond to those, I think really for me is very, very important because we're able to eliminate young kids from getting involved into some of the traps, we're able to mediate bullying situations before they get spiraled out of control, we're able to really direct a young person who's disconnected to maybe a community center in their neighborhood, or really work through the broad network of services we provide across the level, on the city level. We're able to intervene in situations that may be court-involved, that may be a chins right now, but, but in helping it from spiraling out. And we're really targeted, I think, really through the PACT initiative and much of our work with Public Health Commission and really keeping specific data for impact players, non-impact players, and really using that analysis to determine how we move forward, how do we add staff, who do we direct staff? So, and again, Daphne Griffith, our human services director, she's big on data. So we have our data VOSTRAC system, I mean, all of BCYF systems are all data-driven. So much of our outcomes are pretty much measured, again, in results, but also from a, from a numbers perspective, it's really about cases and it's really about referrals.
Thank you. Counsel President?
Thank you. So I just have, can everyone hear me? No? Can everyone hear me? All right. Okay. I just have a, a, a statement and then a quick question. So first and foremost, I want to thank you for your, your looking at girls. Girls may be sugar and spice and everything nice, but they're also increasingly caught up, you know, trafficking guns, collateral damage, setting guys up. In a matter of weeks, I will be doing a hearing about this around the anniversary of the Harlem Street shooting, so I will certainly be reaching out to you, but I thank you for doing that. My question is, as we're talking about investment, and it's important that data drive investment when we're talking about resources and money, you provided data relative to shootings and then we didn't have the slide for the arrests. But even if we had the slide, I'm not sure that I could tell the correlation between the two. And the reason I want to raise that is because first there is the, you know, being robbed of your peace of mind and your sense of security, which everyone deserves when you've been robbed of the life of a loved one and lost them to violence. And then there is the ultimate insult and compounded trauma when that person is not held accountable. And so I wanted to better understand where are we with those numbers, arrests in correlation to the shootings?
I apologize, you don't, because I do, the slide does, I do have a picture of where in relation to those maps that you saw that, that most of those firearm-related arrests take place, and there is definitely a direct correlation there. And, and I agree with you, like talking statistics is so sterile when you're talking about people and, and what they go through when they're victimized or someone that they love is victimized. So I, I completely agree with you that the numbers don't speak, the truth say everything, but the, our arrest data, if you, if, I have the map here, I don't have the ability to put it up there. The, our firearm arrests do correlate to the locations where our firearm violence is. And I think that's because we put in resources to those locations, safe street teams, extra deployments, extra personnel. And so when we're there and something happens and we're able to respond really quickly, the arrests do go up in those locations.
Okay.
That answer your question, Counsel?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very briefly, and I did want to acknowledge another chair as well. Suffolk County Sheriff Stephen Tompkins has joined us. He's in the back, so it's great to be with you, Sheriff Tompkins. So I appreciate and agree with virtually everything that was said in your opening statements, not the least of which was the call for a comprehensive citywide plan that would look at best practices as well as shared outcomes. And, and I also appreciate the data, particularly the five-year period, looking at the number of fatal shootings as well as firearms arrests. And by and large, they seem to be pretty much on the same level with 2010, as you noticed, with, with a spike. Over 2012, if I had the figures correctly, it was, looked, we had 12 fatal shootings in the first six and a half months of the year. Was that figure correct? It was 12?
Yes.
And it's now 20 thus far in 2013, which represents about a 67% increase. So I recognize all the external factors which can cause that, which you went through in terms of turf, old beef, social media retaliation, late night parties, everything. I guess I would just ask very briefly, what would be a factor that caused a low, a significantly lower level last year than this year when so many of the constants would be the same?
I really wish I had an answer for that one.
There, there really is no answer. From year to year, the dynamics change. It could be one year that you have several individuals that are main players out there, they're incarcerated, so they're not making a negative impact on the community, to one year you have everybody released and those historical beefs start again. So that's a, that's a tough question. We wish we had the answer. We would apply it every year, but it's just some years are lower than others. And I can tell you what's been working though, in, in those neighborhoods that have helped us drive those numbers down is working together, getting impact from the community and listening to it. Especially neighborhoods of color, a lot of these where the shootings occur, historically 60 civil unrest, 70s forced busing, 80s controversial police interaction and arrests. So we've come to a point now that we realize we can't arrest the problems away, but instead of us as police officers coming in like an occupying force, we need to work together with the community to identify individuals who are driving those numbers. And I think in recent years, that has been a great success, that we're getting more feedback from the community, from our community service efforts and through our new partnerships. We're getting more people involved. Quite frankly, folks are tired. So when you see a number go down, that is a lot of people getting involved and I think that's the reason we're here today. We want to see those 2012 numbers. We want to see everything go down again.
Okay. Well, I, I appreciate that and I recognize that, you know, there are so many external factors at play, but I would echo what you said in as we move forward, sharing best practices, looking at what works. It's not unnoticed that, that perhaps there were certain factors that were implemented perhaps unknowingly last year that we could, we could look at going forward, so appreciate.
Just one thing on some, unfortunately, we had some multiple homicides directly related to one scene, so we had several, several of those incidents in the first six months, so that did drive the fatal numbers up unfortunately.
Counsel Malloy, we also will be forming a working group and we invite all of the people in this room, if they want to sign up to be notified of when the working group will be meeting, to actually get around a round table and figure out how to come out with solutions. Please sign up in the back and you'll be notified of when our first working group session is. Working group will be chaired by Counsel Tito Jackson and myself. Counselor Arroyo and, Counsel Roy?
Just to say that I want to apologize to, to the members of the community, my colleagues, I have a longstanding scheduling conflict that I am going to have to leave. My chief of staff, Joy DePino, will stay the entire time and I will also watch the video as the city council, we do tape these proceedings and make them available. And we reserve my questions, I really would like opt for the community to have their say in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Royal. At this point, we'd like to, we'd like to have you stay up here if you can, or as long as you can. We'd like to have members of the community who have signed up to testify to begin your testimony. Your testimony, if you could, could be at that podium, as you can see, it's faced, facing all of us, so you're talking to all of us. We ask that you wait for two minutes, there will be a timekeeper. Sarah, you're doing the time? Sarah Hinton will do the, the time, thanks for doing that, Sarah. When she holds it up, that means it's the end of the two minutes. If I, if you've signed up and checked the testify box, I'll call you. I also want to just recognize that Reverend Culpepper is here, it's really great to have Reverend Culpepper here. Also Reverend Coulter is here as well. So we appreciate members of our clergy being here and I, I think we already heard that Steve Tompkins is here as well. I'm going to start with the first checked name, Angus McQuilkin. Angus, thanks for being here. You could...
Excuse me, Counsel Royal, so I didn't get a chance to put my name on the box, so may I add on? As a late answer?
Sure. Why don't you just come, come around here to, to, come around.
Thank you to the chairman and the members of the council for the opportunity, I'm sorry?
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay. There we go. Thank you to the chairman and the members of the council for the opportunity to, to come tonight and share a few thoughts. My name is Angus McQuilkin, I'm here representing the Massachusetts Coalition to Prevent Gun Violence. The coalition was formed earlier this year, it's made up of dozens of organizations based in the city, but also around the state, that are working together to try to pass meaningful and effective gun legislation at the state and federal level. I always think it's helpful to start with a common understanding of the scope of the problem, because this is not just a Boston problem, it's an American problem. More than 30,000 people are killed by guns every year in this country. That's more people than were killed in 9/11, both wars, and more Americans than were killed in 9/11, both wars in Iraq and the war in Afghanistan combined over a 12-year period. Killed every year in our own communities here in the United States. 2,800 of those people every year are children. That's eight kids a day killed by guns in this country, a classroom of kids every three days. We can do better. And at the Mass Coalition to Prevent Gun Violence, we're working collectively to try to make sure that we do better at the state and the federal level. Things we are trying to accomplish, strengthened and universal background checks for every gun sale, wherever a gun is sold, stronger prohibitions on military-style assault weapons and high-capacity ammunition magazines, greater discretion for police chiefs to be able to deny gun licenses in circumstances where they consider an applicant to not be suitable, and meaningful measures to address gun trafficking, which I think everyone in this room knows is the main source of crime guns that are being used in the city of Boston and in urban areas throughout our state. I am here both to offer the support of the coalition, I'm here to, to offer help and to ask for it as well. We as a coalition of organizations want to work with you as city councilors, work with you as community leaders. We want to be part of this task force that's going to start meeting in early August so that we can be part of the solution and bring to the table all of these organizations to assist you in your efforts to find a comprehensive solution here in the city of Boston. But we also want to make a request. We need your voices to be heard in the statewide effort to pass meaningful laws to prevent gun violence. We had a bus of young people from Roxbury come to Worcester two weeks ago for a public hearing and the voices of those kids from Teen Empowerment, from the NAACP, were vitally important for policymakers to hear. There's going to be a hearing in early September at the State House on passage, on state gun legislation. We would like to see a Boston City Council panel at that hearing, we would like to see a Boston Police Department panel at that hearing. We need your voices at the table. So we are here to offer our help and to ask for yours as we work for solutions to gun violence here across the state. Thank you.
Thank you Angus, thank you for your work. Thank you. Molly Malloy, I'm going to read the five names at a time. Molly Malloy, David Crump, Suzanne Schlossberg, Dam Pivry. If you could just approach the, the podium. So if you could also queue up David Crump, Suzanne Schlossberg, if you just want to queue up for us, that would be great. Please, go ahead.
Hi. Is this working? Yes, hi. Good afternoon and thanks to the city council for holding this hearing this evening. My name is Molly Malloy, I am a chapter leader of the Boston area Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. We're a grassroots group of parents asking for common sense solutions to reduce gun violence. We were founded in December 2012 and since then have formed 100 chapters nationwide. Until six months ago, I was just a mom caring for my three kids at home and then the Newtown massacre occurred and I was recently after that trying to pick up my kids from school and I saw police cars barricading the street out in front. And so I thought, okay, well, it's my turn now for my kids to be shot. So I pulled my car over to the side of the road and with my heart beating, started running towards the doors of the school. Then I saw that that day, there was a funeral procession and they were not there for a crime scene, so I was spared. But I realized that shootings of children are what I've come to expect and it's not good enough anymore. I can't sit back and wait until it is my child's turn or your child's turn. And I know Massachusetts laws for gun ownership have been considered strong in comparison with other states, but in our country, more preschoolers are killed every year by guns than law enforcement officials and guns are now the number two cause of death for teenagers as noted by all of the panelists tonight. We need to make it as difficult as possible for this to happen. Every gun that kills a child first passes through the hands of an adult and many of these adults are lawfully owning their guns in this state. So our organization is part of the coalition that Angus McQuilkin just described and we are taking part in public hearings this summer where new, stronger gun safety legislation is being considered by the Committee for Public Safety. And I urge all of you as concerned people to stand in front of the congressional committee and tell them that you want the strongest laws possible for our state. One of the provisions that is being considered is a one-gun-a-month law and it's thought that that could go a long way to reduce straw purchasing and gun trafficking. So it looks like my time is up and I thank you for the opportunity and I hope to see many of you and especially city council members who have a very important, powerful voice. I hope to see you at the hearings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. David, just hold on one second, we have Charles Page. There's a group of kids in here that have to get home and out of respect to, to them, I think everyone can agree that we should let our kids go first. So, thank you, I heard some support for that. So Charles Page, representing Pipeline Leadership, wanted to speak on behalf of the group of kids that are here tonight. Charles?
Hello, hello, I'm Charles Page and I'm the field supervisor for the Pipeline of Leadership Program with the NAACP. The NAACP stance on gun violence is that we should create stronger laws to help prevent straw purchasing. Straw purchasing is killing our communities. People are dumping their guns into our communities and it needs to stop. The NAACP would like to stop the cradle prison pipeline. We are redirecting this pipeline with the Pipeline of Leadership Program. Also tomorrow, there is a game changer at the Presbyterian Church on Warren Street at 6 o'clock. Change is in this room and we need to, you guys need to come out and show your support. Fire it up!
Ready to go!
Fire it up!
Ready to go!
Fire it up!
Ready to go!
Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Forgive me, I've never spoke at a hearing before and I'm a little nervous. I'm, I'm nervous because there's a lot of beautiful people in this room that I recognize, I know, do good work and I want to represent that well with the words that I speak tonight. I want to honor all of you that are here. I'm here with my coworker Samantha Wright Colero and my boss Marty Chadwick from Brigham and Wellness Hospital. We are representative of the violence prevention programs and I'm probably not saying that correctly because I'm still nervous. But in my capacity, what I do is, is I see all the victims of the shootings that come to the hospital. Previously, I was seen in working with the families that had lost loved ones. So that's another reason why I'm nervous, because it's in my eyes every day and in my heart and weighs heavy. So getting back to facts, I have seen for 20 months now, since I've been at Brigham, about 220 victims. I guess I wanted the points that I had were to talk about the gaps in the service that we provide. Those gaps are after the incredible work that I do with people who are up here and out here, where we try to scrap everything we can together to meet the needs of our patients. But the reality is, is that we're all failing them and we know it. We're failing them because for whatever reason, we don't know how to put the time in or the actual real grassroots support into their lives. The people that are out here working every day, quote-unquote, eight-hour shifts, it's really a 12-hour shift and a lot of you work that shift, right brother? And they're stressed too, so they're traumatized, y'all are traumatized, we're all traumatized. So what I would like to bring it down to, because I know I don't have much time, is... So what I would like to bring it down to, because I know I don't have much time, is work on your focus group, work on your focus group, because I'm your soldier, I'm going to be behind you, okay? Work on the effects of trauma, the mental health counseling. Actual councils will come to people's homes because we need to rethink how we do counseling, We need to think about how our youth are impacted at schools, how trauma affects their brain where they can't even concentrate when they're at schools, right? Plus, they got to navigate this environment to get to school, so they're traumatized. Think about just the fact that when I was a street worker, I'm still a street worker, even though I work at the hospital, I'm just a street worker for the hospital. I still take my orders, Mr. Webb. Is that we're supposed to connect these young people to services, and we all do the best we can, but there's not enough services. There's just not. There's not enough placements for these young people, and quite frankly, there's not enough of us out on the street doing the work. Okay? That's not a criticism, that's just a fact. And it's not because y'all haven't fought for it to happen, it's because I've witnessed it, okay? I'm not here to be negative. But if I am speaking for anybody today, I'm speaking for those victims. And I'm one of those victims 22 years ago.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Schlossberg, and I'm a member of the Coalition, but I'm also a member of a much smaller group. Most of us live in West Roxbury, Roseland, Deal, and Jamaica Plain. And in that group, it just so happens, there are a lot of people who were former teachers and principals, and some of them are people who devoted their lives to working in the inner city. And I know that group is very concerned about what's going on in your neighborhoods. And last week, when I was at the hearing out in Worcester, I had the opportunity to corner one of the young men from the NAACP, and I said to him, "I want you to look me in the eye and be perfectly honest with me, and tell me if there's anything that a group of white, older people can do that would be of interest, that would really help young people in your community." And he said something that touched me very much. He said, "You can be a presence. You can just be there. You can come into our community and let us know you care." So that's why I'm here today. It might sound corny, and it may not do much. It's not a real solution, but it's heartfelt, and I hope there are a lot of us who feel that way. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your indulgence, allowing me to speak at a last moment. My question is to the community and the churches. My name is anonymous, but if you want, you can call me Twice Born. But I am going to speak for all of those victims, and in particular Tiffany Moore, Jermaine Goffigan, Trina Fassad, and Steve Odom. Now, I just span decades in, is it going to be business as usual to the community, the churches, or is it going to be enough is enough? And my qualifications to be able to come here and say, is it going to be enough is enough, is because of the gentleman that just spoke. I'm a victim too, I've been on both sides. As a victim of gun violence in the 80s, as a member of a notorious street gang, where I was a perpetrator, it was part of shootings and gunshot, and then in the 90s, when I was on the other side as an original street worker for then Mayor Flynn and Council City, Council Mickey Roach, as a street worker, and being a part of the first gun buyback that I know that really existed was through Minister Dar Muhammad and then City Councilor Bruce Bowling, where I turned in several firearms, and it all culminated with me being arrested as a street worker and doing federal prison time. So when are we going to say enough is enough? Because there's big business with murders. And we got to get tired, because see, we elect them. Nothing to do with who's sitting on the council right now, but we elect them. The churches have to be the power and the force to make a difference. So here it is, I'm 50 years old, and I got a 14-year-old, 6'3", and I worry about what's going to happen with him, because he looks like a man, he's tall, and now here it is, I spend the 30 years of being on this side to now being a father and a grandfather. So when are we going to say enough is enough? So it doesn't matter, it ain't about me, it's about all the victims from 1980 to right now. Because see, if I was, I'm going to close with this, if I was a prosecutor, my evidence that something ain't working would be all these statistics. That would be the indictment that I would use to let people know that it ain't working. All the millions of dollars that came through, something ain't working. I just left Chicago, I'm just back right now, I'm born and raised in the Bay. I've been in Chicago for the, Minneapolis and Chicago for the last three years. Chicago would love to have those numbers. They would love to have those numbers. The churches and the people are mobilizing in Chicago, they would love to have the numbers that we have. So is it either going to be business as usual, or is it going to be enough is enough? Thank you.
Thank you.
...neighborhoods we're going to be working in, or in their communities, if they're downtown, that belongs to all of us. So I really want to be supportive.
Okay, that's it, I'm going to read some other names. Sorry, after Reverend Culpepper, and Dan Perry, Rachel Lewis, Doug Miller, Charles Clemmons, and Sarah Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Thank you Reverend, good to see you.
Councilmember Presley, Yancey, O'Malley, and Jackson. One of the things I heard you talking about was, how can you measure results and what strategies have been employed? One of the things that we've done is we have what we call a Trotter Park Peace Program. Thanks to the Boston Foundation and Ed Powell, we get funding every summer for the Trotter Park Peace Program. The first year, the church funded the program. And we thought that if we took the young folks as they were coming out of jail, and we hired them, and put them all in Trotter Park, and had workshops, and had, in fact, Courtney Gray is speaking to the young folks now. We do a workshop Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, we do barbecue, and movie night. We felt if we hired the young folks that were coming out of jail to be security for the peace program, and to guard the perimeter, eyes, ears, that we would take some of the young folks that would otherwise be out in the street perpetrating, and turn their thinking into securing the community. What we found after the first two years of the Boston Foundation funding was it worked. The young folks that we just hired, we looked to see who just got released, we hired them, they become the security for their community. No longer are they shooting, they're thinking security, because they're getting paid a measly $100 a week, but they are working hard to earn that $100. They're not perfect, we got to watch them every minute, they got to watch us, they watch who's riding by, they watch who's walking by, they watch who's, but they are the security for the peace program. Then we hired youth leaders, all involved in the activity. With regard to the police, what we did was we had a great partnership with the Boston Police at that time. And it was working pretty good, the partnership. You know, they were doing the walking patrols, I think they since stopped the walking patrols, something they probably shouldn't have done. But we had a partnership. And then there was a leadership change in B2. And once the leadership changed, the whole strategy changed, because we had an understanding with the police that they wouldn't come into the park and shake the kids down, and with the dogs, and put them up against the walls and search them, because the kids were pretty much policing themselves. Once the leadership at B2 changed, their strategy changed. And let me tell you what happened. I got a call last night from some of the young folks in the park about the police down at the park, taking notes, I'm glad, with the dogs, searching them, up against the wall. I was in one of those political meetings, but I couldn't get back down to the park. And my point is that once the police strategy changed of not partnering and no longer doing the community policing in the way they were doing when Ed Davis first started, then it became a much different predicament. And so the kids are with Courtney Gray, he's trying to explain to them how the Boston Police changed their strategies and started rushing into the park and throwing them up against the wall, and searching them with dogs, and coming out with their guns drawn in a way they hadn't done for the past four years, because they were securing the park on their own. And the other thing that bothered us about what the police were doing is they came in last Saturday after our kickoff with the Boston Finest. They had the cameras, and the Boston Finest came in, and they didn't realize that as they were filming those kids with the Boston Finest, the kids were filming them too. And they were showing me last night how the police came, you know, I don't know how the Boston Finest started, but we don't have a safe Boston, and these police are on television, they're the Boston Finest, but we're not safe. And I don't know how the council let the Boston Police Finest go on television all over the country like this, city, everybody can walk down the street, it's not a safe city. I don't know what Boston Finest is doing, they're not walking the street like they were before, they're not talking to the pastors like they were before, they're not coming to the community meetings like they were before, they're now the Boston Finest. And so I'm looking at the Boston Finest, and the thinking is that in order to keep the Boston Finest, they got to have somebody that they're locking up in order to stay on television. So it doesn't lend to trying to keep kids out of jail, because if there was nobody to lock up, there would be no Boston Finest on television. And so they have to keep the kids on the street doing the shootings and the guns in their hands in order to have Boston Finest on television, because they got to show somebody's getting arrested. And so it just doesn't make sense after a while. And so we've got this peace program. I want you guys to go back to agreement, stop coming into that park, harassing the kids, because we thought if we could get all the kids that are involved in activity up and down the street, in the park with some workshop and some positive activities, they would stop thinking about running down the street to shoot Day-Day and JoJo and Mimi, because they're doing some positive, and it's been working. And so we need the police to kind of fall back, they know where the hotspots are, y'all know, you had them up there, and we think that it's important, if all of these kids had a job, we've heard that saying, "In order to stop a bullet, give a kid a job." Thank you very much.
Thank you. So...
I got to get back to the peace program.
Thank you. We, thank you Reverend. We had, so Dan Perry, Rachel Lewis, Doug Miller, Charles Clemmons, Sarah Flynn, Sheriff Tompkins. Also, we're joined by my colleague, Councilor Charles Yancey, who's joined us. Welcome, Councilor Yancey, it's good to see you too. Dan?
Good evening. My name is Dane Perry, I'm a resident of Charlestown. I'm also a member of the Mass Coalition to Prevent Gun Violence, and a member of a working group on gun violence at Trinity Church in Copley Square. I'd like to begin by expressing my thanks to Chairman Ross and the committee for scheduling this critically important hearing and the work that you will be continuing to do. In 1974, an organization I was working with published a pamphlet entitled "A Shooting Gallery Called America," in hopes of impacting the issues of gun safety in our nation. Things are so much worse now than they were back then. Shooting Gallery, the pamphlet, referred to there being 200 million firearms in America back in the mid-'70s. Today, there are over 300 million. There were 25,000 gun deaths a year then, today, over 30,000. Unfortunately, there's not much that the City Council can do legislatively to stem this terrible tide, but you can be a constant and outspoken voice, a loud voice in the state and in the nation. Massachusetts has been one of the leaders in the country in strong gun laws, and that is reflected in our homicide rate, which is lower than most other states, but we are falling behind. Several other states have passed broader and stronger legislation just this year. It's critical that we strengthen our laws and remain in the forefront nationally. The lives of our youth depend on it, and we heard them speaking to that here. Boston has experienced dramatic increases in gun violence before, in the late '80s, and we responded to it with imagination and determination, and set a new standard of comparison for the nation on how to address that violence. We can do that again. If you have not yet done it, I urge you to look back at what was done then, and what ideas can be adopted from that time that we are not yet doing. We need short-term solutions, yes, but several of you have spoken about the deep societal issues, which will require a long-term effort. But more specifically, I urge you to implement a gun buyback program. The city has done it before, many cities across the nation are doing it now, several are doing it several times a year. Some think that it's not worth doing, but it does not, that it does not remove the firearms that will be used on the streets. But removing a gun from the community is removing a gun from the community, a gun that may be misused, stolen, or used in anger. If it is not already being done in this city, I urge you to take a look at the concept of restorative justice. Many communities around the country are finding it to be an approach to address violence in a very different way, a way that can be healing for the community. We need to rethink how we do justice. I urge you to send some leaders from the community to Easton Mennonite University in Virginia for training at their Peace and Justice Institute. People from communities across the world who are experiencing violence for years, go there for training and take back home a new hope for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We're adding a time, just so we can be a little, yeah, we just want to make sure everyone gets to speak that wants to speak. So yeah, so we had Rachel Lewis, Doug Miller, if you could just queue up, please, Charles Clemmons, Sarah Flynn. All right, so let's just, Rachel's not here, Doug's not here. Okay, Doug?
I'm here.
Okay.
I'm trying to find the speaker.
Okay, go ahead, Doug.
Okay, I'll try to be brief. I'm here with, I'm Doug Miller, I live in Back Bay. And I'm here with the Massachusetts Coalition to Prevent Gun Violence, which is a group that's got a number of organizations. I'm partly here because of Moms Demand Action. I'm also here because I'm a member of the Committee Against Gun Violence for the First Church in Boston. This is the church that John Winthrop and the first settlers in Boston settled, I think Mike came to speak at our church the Sunday after the marathon. And it's got a long tradition of trying to be a presence in Boston, of trying to make Boston an example for the world. I live in Back Bay, and I see foreigners parading up and down Newbury Street, going to restaurants, talking in all sorts of languages, and they admire Boston, they see Boston as this community. Boston is a wonderful place. I moved to Boston five years ago from Sandy Hook, Connecticut. I grew up in Youngstown, Ohio. I've lived long enough to see friends die from gun suicide, to see children of friends killed in inner-city random shootings. Boston can be an example, the work you're doing is very important. We are, at our best, a community that is all over Boston. The people in my part of Boston really do care. That First Church, Boston, when there was a vote to join this coalition, it's only about the third time that congregation took a position on anything since 1620, and it was unanimous, it was more than 100 people answering, "Yes, we care about this issue, we will pay attention." Please, members of the City Council, keep this issue in everybody's view, we will support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Charles?
Thank you, councilors. For those that don't know, my name is Charles Clemens, a former Boston police officer, former special police officer, and a former correctional officer. And I've seen the results of community policing from the late '80s to the early '90s. Community policing is real simple. You have officers from the neighborhood, live in the neighborhood, who worship in the neighborhood, who went to school in the neighborhood, who know the neighborhood, and you have that partnership. That's gone. That needs to come back. In the '80s, we had the Boston miracle because of the partnerships. We talked about the budget. I'll say to the councilors, the money is there. And it's proof that the money is there because the council voted for the purchase of a building. We spent, the taxpayers, we spent $13 million for the building. However, the building was assessed at $6 million. So obviously, the money is there. We have to definitely make sure that the resources come back to our community. To the Health Department, yes, you talked about the healthcare, but it's culturally sensitive. We have to understand that these shootings, people of color are done by people of color, our youth. You have the partnership with groups like the Pyramid Builders, ABAC, the Osiris Group. And City Council Mike Ross, you made a statement about the temperature rises and the guns rises. I'm gonna say that you're incorrect because City Council Chuck Turner actually introduced data that contradicts that, and we need to go back and check that out. Quality of schools, education, unemployment, those young people that are committing these crimes, 37% of them are unemployed. So we need to check that out. I said thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles. So I had Sarah...
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, I was...
We have you, you're right after Sarah. So we have Sarah Flynn, Sheriff. I had Cindy Diggs, and then you, Andrea. No problem.
Hi, Lee. Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Flynn. I'm the lead organizer for a group, Mothers for Justice and Equality. It's a group made up of mothers and families, faith-based organizations, nonprofits, families that have lost their loved ones to homicide. I myself, I lost my son at the age of 15 in 1981. This gentleman was just talking and naming some families. Those families, most of them, are part of our organization and what we're advocacy group. And like he had said, is it gonna be, you know, business as usual? No, it's not gonna be business as usual because the mothers are coming out. We're going and testifying like I am tonight. We have meetings with our elected officials, and we look and see with these important hearings who on the city council are present. You know, we realize that these different committees may be a small group, but public safety and the gun violence is a very big, important issue. You know, I lost my son to a knife fight, but I lost my nephew at 17 to gun violence. I've seen, I've been working as an organizer for over 31 years, so I've seen the ups and the downs and how our children need to be protected. We, as adults, we need to come out and let these children know that we're not gonna continue let this happen to us, happen to them. Because they look at us, that we have to, you know, show them with our actions. We can't tell them not to pick up guns if we're going around like they were saying, fighting over tariffs, fighting over funds. We have to, we have to become more unified. We have to work with the police. We can't, they're not the sole answer to our problem. We have to look in our households. You know, we have to be accountable. We can't point fingers. You know, we all have to work together. And the gun issue, like we've been, there was a gentleman that was talking about going, you know, it being a national issue. Yes, it is. It's a national issue. There were six of our members went to Washington to support the gun buyback program. So, but we need to look at Boston, too, because it is, it's a national crisis, but it's affecting us in Boston. I won't, you know, really take up a lot of your time, but, you know, and then the city councilmen, they have been really looking at this issue, and I appreciate it. The Mothers for Justice and Equality appreciates it. And another thing I need to say, in order for us to put a dent in these issues, we have to be registered voters. We have to go out and participate because these individuals, these elected officials that make these decisions, they look at our community and say, "Why should we, you know, look at and fund them for this, that, and the other?" They don't vote for us. They don't, they don't care about their community, but Mothers for Justice is letting every, putting everybody on notice. We care about our community. We care about our children. If you've seen the billboards that have been around the city, we are the ones that work with the Boston Health Commission and Clear Channel to put those billboards around letting you know, our children are not forgotten. They may have been buried, but they meant something to us. And all the other children in the communities, even the ones that are incarcerated, we care about them also. And one other thing...
Three minutes, I'm sorry.
Okay, one other thing I was, I wanted to make a point on is like looking at all the resources that have been shown. I was looking at the planning for the Fourth of July, and they had this system that they would target a person and could follow them. And my question is, why can't the city look at that particular program? Because it says, the MBTA's looking at it, but the Boston Police are saying, "We'll think about it." But why not look at that system and see? Because we need to find out exactly who. They talk about the 1%. We need to know who that 1% is, and if the police department, lock them up. Don't wait until they've taken a life or they, their lives are taken because it really irritates me to see and read, "Oh, they're known to the police." How are they known? If you know they're doing all these things, lock them up, you know? And that's about all I have to say today, tonight, but I will be doing more testing.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you. Thank you. Was Sheriff Tompkins still here? Sheriff, is the sheriff still here? Sheriff Tompkins? Nope. Next is Cindy Diggs, oh, yeah, Cindy Diggs and Andrea James, then Liz Miranda.
Hi, everybody. My name is Cindy Diggs, and I'm the founder of Peace Boston. Anyone who knows me knows that two minutes is not gonna do well, so I'm just gonna join the committee and say what I have to say later. So there are some points that I would like to say after having done this work for the past eight years. Peace Boston is a movement that was started by a group of youth workers who were formerly members of the hip-hop music industry, and we have one method that worked for us back in the '90s, and that's providing alternatives to violence. And in the '90s, we used it to get young people who were actually older, who wanted to be involved in the music industry, and that kept them from participating in the crimes that they probably were doing before that. So we use the same methodology in this, this time that's happening right now to do that same work. But a lot of the times, we're doing it on our own and we're doing it with our own money. And so now, you don't see Peace Boston happening because I lost my job and I was the bank of Peace Boston, and that shouldn't happen, that you take someone with our skill set to have to stop doing this work, which we do very well because we don't have the money to do it. We were selling the stock piece t-shirt. I'm wearing one of them now. And we raised money to put on these events and to put out a CD that we encouraged over, I'd say 150 artists to put out the CD, which we use to have our own one fund. We donated money towards a burial fund for the Lewiston Brown Peace Institute, and that shouldn't happen either, selling CDs to help bury young people. So the one thing that I would like to see come out of tonight's hearing and future work is that we have one general body that oversees all of us that do this work. Because I spoke to Councilor Jackson before to say that when I was working at Boston Medical Center in the adolescent clinic, I would take days off using my vacation time to organize a violence prevention and intervention meeting, and there was no such thing before that. And it's very difficult for me to hear that this wasn't happening. Like, everybody who does trauma work, violence work, peace promotions, no one is overseeing us, and we're working in silos, which brings us to mind to what the young people are doing, working in silos. So we have to get it together. I'd like to see a calendar put together where Peace Boston does an event this month, Mothers for Justice does it another month, the Score for More does it another month, so that there's always something going on with young people. When I was a kid, Kevin White made sure that we had summer thing, we had something to do all the time, and now it just doesn't happen. And an idle mind is a devil's workshop. So let's work together so that we can solve this problem in different ways because it's not as big as it really is, that it sounds like. I work with a lot of the young people that you talked about, the relationships and that sort of problem is really what it is. It's the lack of being able to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you. Oh, Sheriff, you are here. Sheriff Tompkins, and then Andrea James, and then Liz Miranda. Liz already left, so then Brother Kante after.
First and foremost, how much time do we have?
You have two minutes.
We're very strict.
Okay, yeah, I heard a little ding. Let me say this. Number one, I want to thank you all for coming to Hiberna, to come to our neighborhoods, to talk to us about these very important issues. This doesn't always happen, so thank you from the bottom of my heart, from all of the employees in my department. It makes a world of difference to us to see you here because it says loud and clear to us that you really do care about what it is that we're trying to get accomplished as a community. So, listen, so, real quick, in the minute and a half that I have left, let me say this. January 22nd, Governor Patrick appointed me the 31st Sheriff of Suffolk County, but the first African-American male sheriff of Suffolk County. And the reason that that's important is this. Across the Commonwealth, people of color probably number somewhere around 13, 14, 15%. In my facility, people of color are north of 65%. That says to me that something is systematically wrong when you have that many people of color incarcerated, when you don't have that many people of color in the Commonwealth. And so I think what we need to do as a community is to continue to have discussions like this, continue to rally around our friends and our families and our neighbors. And real quickly, in the minute or so that I have left, just let me say this to you. Our mandate at the Sheriff's Department is care, custody, and control. And so what that might sound like on the surface is that we warehouse people. This administration does not warehouse people. This administration is going to correct. We're gonna work with our population so that they have a better chance of succeeding when they get out of here. Let me quickly explain to you what care, custody, and control means. Custody means imprisonment, but it also means guardianship. Control means that is the element that allows us to redirect the way a person thinks or acts. And care is that element that allows for opportunities, maintenance, health, wealth, and compassion. And when I stand in front of some audiences and I talk about compassion, they say, "Why would you talk about compassion?" All right, I'm just about done. About compassion for folks that have gone to jail. I say I talk about compassion because these folks are going home. On average, men are with us for 14 months, women are with us for eight months. We, as a community, have to work together collaboratively with all of these agencies and all of these legislators to make their time back home much better. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Now, we have Andrea, and then Brother Kante.
Thank you to all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the members of the city council. It's fitting that I follow after Sheriff. My name is Andrea James, and I'm from Families for Justice as Healing. We are a legislative advocacy group in Roxbury, and we speak from the perspective of incarcerated and formerly incarcerated women and our children. We believe that the gun violence that we see here in Boston and in Chicago and across the country is a symptom of a failed war on drugs and mass incarceration. And we just want to take this opportunity to encourage our community to pay attention to what's going on legislatively. We have 60 pieces of gun legislation that are pending. Most of those pieces of gun legislation our organization supports except for one, which is the Gun Offender Registry Bill, which is going to be a disaster for our young black men. We already have a quarry bill. We already have quarry. A gun offender registry does not get to the issue of the manufacturers and distributors. We now have smart technology that is affordable and accessible. If we put pressure as communities across this country on the gun manufacturers to use this smart technology, it would only allow those who own the guns legally to use those guns, and it would eliminate a huge percentage of the gun violence that we're experiencing. And the gun violence we're experiencing here in Boston is a direct result of a void for many years, for too many years, on the community wellness initiatives that need to be funded in this, in this city. And I encourage the city council...
Time.
I encourage the city council, and I'll close here. Please think about the organizations such as Families for Justice as Healing and these other very small grassroots organizations that are doing some really good work that also need some funding and some assistance from the city to do the work directly in the communities that we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brother Kante, and on behalf of Greater Love Tabernacle Church, I'm here for my pastor, Pastor William Dickerson. So I wish you grace and peace. I'd like to say a few things in the short minute that I have. I want to say thank you to the city councilors. Thank you to Ed Powell and the Boston Police officials for coming tonight. It's very important that you all came. It makes me feel good to see that you all had this council meeting in our neighborhood. So I would like to suggest and recommend that perhaps you might be able to do this once every month. It's comforting to know that you guys have come out of City Hall, so thank you very much. A lot of you all here are friends and family and know me well, and I'm here to represent not just Greater Love Tabernacle, but I'm here to represent the children that I've worked with over the last 20 years of my life. For those of you who don't know the work that I do, I'm a youth advocate, I am a community organizer, and I'm a concerned citizen. I'm born and raised in Boston. 1979, I grew up on Humboldt Ave and Crawford Street, aka H Block. I've earned my stripes to be on this panel or to speak to you tonight, and I just want to say that as a citizen of Roxbury, I am tired of seeing blue lights and gunshots hearing at night. I'm tired of seeing young kids murdered in front of my face. I've seen in broad daylight on a Saturday afternoon, coming from ministerial class at 2:00 PM last summer, a child or a young man shot at with another brother that shot him with a 9-millimeter gun. I've seen that scenario play out too many times in my life. Two summers ago...
Time.
I saw three murders take place in Grove Hall. That doesn't take place in Brookline. We need money. We need resources. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz? Yeah, I think we already, so let me just, I just, hold on a second here. Who was on deck just now? Liz? So you want, you want to take Liz's place? All right, go ahead, and let me just finish reading who we have here. We had Liz Miranda, so you're gonna sit in for Liz. Then I have Nikki Johnson, Abdou Hamid, Justin Springer, and Angela Kelly. And a couple of those people are gone, so we're actually almost, we're doing well here.
So, my name is Stefana Stokes. I am a resident of this fair city of Boston. And like everyone else, I appreciate this Committee on Public Safety, particularly the Chair and Vice Chair for coming into Roxbury, along with Superintendent Gross and all of the representatives from the various street worker programs, city and health agencies. But I'm mad because we're not really talking about solutions to the issues of how we really bring these numbers that seemingly are increasing down. And when we're looking around in this hall here, which is big enough probably to fill at least 300 to 400 people or more if this standing room only, I feel as if we do our due diligence when there's something in it for us to bring the people who most need the services and information that is being provided to them, or maybe even give you information about what's happening in the streets, who can probably tell us all, you know, what they might need to put the guns down. And there's really not any representatives of that population in here today. And so, if we're going to make it our business to be sure that we know how to fill up rooms during campaign sessions and everything, we have to figure out how to get this message out to the community, to bring them in when your most precious valuable time of being here up close and personal to them is the time in which they have to bring that information or learn about programs and services. And the last thing I'll say to all of the agencies and small grassroots organizations in here, I do work for a foundation, I do understand how funds are, how we raise funds and give grants, and so whatever I can do to offer that information to you, I will do so. And that's all I want to say, but this needs to happen again with the right people, with the right mind, and in terms of that, enough is enough. It's enough of having these same types of hearings that don't really produce results, rather they increase rates of homicides and shootings.
Thank you. We have Nikki Johnson, Abdou Hamid, Justin Springer, Angela Kelly, then Reverend Culpepper.
Hi. So, my name is Nikki, and I work for Tina Prahman. And I'm 16 years old, and I just want to say hi. I'm the face that everybody's discussing tonight, all the youth of Boston. So, I can tell you what happened in 2010. We were all at Shea Boos. In 2010, I remember when I was younger, the one place that we all had to be was Shea Boos, so that's why. And it's funny, because it's right next to the police station. And I remember that the reason we stopped going was because it kept getting shut down earlier than the time allotted. So, Shea Boos, you'd go, you would be there from like 8 to 12, and then for some reason, police came in and told us that we had to stop at 10. Now, being that, a lot of the people who were there were 17 and 18, they didn't feel as though they had a bedtime, so people just stopped going just because of that. Then, I want to retweet something that somebody posted on my Facebook status. I was like, I'm at a community meeting, you know, talking, I feel kind of happy and proud to represent the youth. And my friend said, "I've been to one, I hated it. They totally disregarded what I said about youth jobs," but that was two years ago. Two years ago was 2011. So, I fight for youth jobs all the time, because I feel as though, people are always trying to give the youth resources, like the YMCA and the Boys and Girls Club, and you're always trying to do these like girls groups and things like that, and that's very helpful, it is. I love those things too. But let's just be completely honest, the reason why the youth are out here throwing these parties that are causing all these problems is because of the fact that they have no money. So, I feel as though my life got better when I got a job. A lot of my friends' lives got better when they got a job. A lot of them put the guns down, and trust me, I've lost five, I've had five friends shot in the last month, and I've lost about three in the last year. 16. So, I understand where you guys are coming from, when you feel as though we need resources, but the only real resource you really need to use is us. We need jobs, and not just like working at McDonald's or working at Staples. We need jobs that's going to put people my age, my color, my race, in situations like this to get to speak to you guys. So, I feel as though a lot of the problems that we're having, a lot of the gun violence and all this and that, is because we have nothing to do. And if you don't believe me, check my Facebook, because they definitely post about it all the time. I wish I had a job. Then when they do get a job, done with the lacking. Just lacking. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki. Justin Springer, Angela Kelly, Stephanie Shapiro... I'm sorry, Stephanie Shapen. Does anyone else want to testify who's here today? Okay, so why don't you line up right behind this next speaker? Please, come on, please take the microphone. If you could just introduce yourself.
Okay, my name is Stephanie Shapiro-Burkison.
Oh, hi, Stephanie. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Thank you for holding this hearing, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm a parent. I live about a mile straight up Harrison, and I too am a Mass Coalition member. But in addition to asking you to support the Coalition's work by showing up to hearings, I'm also here to be a voice advocating that you fully support opportunity, such as those which Streetsafe offer, instead of just punitive measures. For any effort that we move forward with from here, I furthermore hope that the deeper root causes are targeted. In other words, please don't support an unsustainable blame the victim, victim of social injustice approach. Finally, I spent many years bringing Boston's Operation Ceasefire to Chicago with Chicago Ceasefire. And so, I'm also here to remind you of the incredible collaborative effort that happened here in Boston back in the 90s. And that's not yet been able to happen in Chicago with ceasefire or any violence prevention approach there. So, based on my experiences there, however we are going to move forward from here, I really hope that, to reiterate what many people have said before me, I hope it's collaboratively, also including those who you mentioned before, who you've determined to be at greatest risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just queue up right behind that line there, and you, okay. Yes, ma'am, please. Please, go ahead. Please, if you could introduce yourself.
I'll be brief.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming into the neighborhood to hold this meeting. I just want to say that I work for God. I'm a preacher, and for about 40 years, I have been preaching the gospel. And I never thought much about getting involved with the political system, but this year, being 75 years old, it seems as if I have to step out of the arena of just preaching to the people and become involved in what's going on. And my sense is that we, as a nation of people, have forgotten that God is in charge. And whatever we are trying to do, we must put Him first. We can't, every one of us cannot say, "Well, I did this," or "I did..." But the Lord is allowing us to. And the other thing that I wanted to say was, I do believe that we as ministers need to be in the forefront, gathering the people to come down to City Hall when we feel that there is something that needs to be addressed. We need to get the people together and peacefully, because I'm not for war, I'm for peace. But that's what we as ministers of God supposed to be doing. We gather people, not with us being self-serving to come down to you. That Reverend Culpepper is the only person that I saw on Facebook where he had a plan, as well as my friend Charles. That's all I want to say.
Hello, everybody. I'm going to be very brief. My name is Clifton Braithwaite, and my name on stage is Mr. Industry C1, and I represent a lot of brothers and sisters who look just like me. It's very easy. The task is not hard. You have to be what I call my brother's keeper. Right now, I adopted a young man from the street. Mother, crackhead, father, drug dealer, both parents dead. I don't have a lot of money. I work every day hard. I take care of my mother. It's not hard, because the people with the money can do it. Over the last 25 years, I have got probably over 150 or better young men and women in college. I use music as a tool to wake them up and to give them other avenues. But you got to take our kids from our city and put them in the offices. They don't need to be on the street cleaning, because that's what we are always looked at. We have to take the ones who are in the better homes and learn how to work from the ground up, and take the ones from the ground and bring them to the offices and put them in there. I am telling you, as my word is borne under God, if I'm doing it with no money, you can do it with some money. And stop paying people outside of my community who don't know my community, because no one's sitting down with me or any of my colleagues, Cindy Diggs. We've been doing this for years, registering people to vote for years. It can be done, but you got to put the tools in the right people's hands and the people who really care about my community, because I'm going to always be there to stop the nonsense. And if I can take a young, one young man off the street, bring him into my home and call him my son, what can you do? Music for Life, Boston is Real, we love you, but give us the support to support our Rome. That's it.
Hello, my name is CJ Victor. This is kind of nerve wracking for me. It's my first time being here. Just want to talk to y'all so that, because I'm tired of seeing children younger than me and younger as me die so young. Like, it's not, this isn't what it's supposed to be. Y'all have the money to change this. Y'all have the power to change this, and I want y'all to speak out. And like, I can't do this because I'm not in y'all's position. If I was in y'all's position, I'd be talking about everything that I see in my city and my community, because people outside, they don't know what's going on the inside. All they see is everything on the outside for what it is, but not what it truly is on the inside. So, I'm just standing out here to talk for people of my color, for people of my age, because I believe that y'all have the power to do this. I'm going to vote for y'all every single time, especially when I turn 18. And just want to talk to the police officers. If y'all know who are doing this, please go out and stop them, because y'all have the information, y'all just have to make movements. But y'all just, some of y'all, y'all just sit there and do absolutely nothing. More importantly, when police officers know someone who has a gun license, I feel as they should be checking upon them, probably once a week or something, or have like a whole background check of their whole family. Because you know that person who has a gun license, yes, they're cleared to go, but you don't know about their family members or people in their family are cleared to go. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
My name is Mr. Richard Diggs. I'm also a parent of homicide on the streets of Boston. My son was killed on Glenwood Street back in Ohio. I want to just say that I think that it should be like more programs behind the walls of the incarcerated, because I was too on both sides. And today, I stand with Pastor William Diggson, and I sit on a board, we call Black Men in Collision on Washington Street in Commons Square. There need to be more fathers to step out, more men to volunteer, because I don't think it's about money, it's about, there's something extra more that we can do. We're doing something for more men of color to stand up, so it can teach our young men what it means to be a man. I wasn't always that gentleman that would get up and say something, but in our community as looking at the homicides, and then something that's going to help the families of the victims after homicide, what happens after the homicide? Is prayer just going to bless those people? Of me being a father, no information of who killed my son, and he wasn't a street kid, to what do I do now? What makes me have a heart that want to go out to the parents and the families that are victims to our homicides? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Aresha Miller. I came here tonight because I was fighting my own fight pertaining to my education so I could complete my last class. But here, I'm not, now that I'm here, I'm not going to even speak about myself, I'm going to speak about the kids, and I'm a producer-songwriter, and I'm going to sing a song pertaining to the kids that will address this issue. It's called "No Child." I'm just a child, and even though I smile, I can't let the pain show in my eyes, because deep down inside, I cry, I cry, I cry, I cry. Because I'm just a child, and even though I smile, I can't let the pain show in my eyes, because deep down inside, I cry. No child should be trapped in the house, papa. No child should be broken down, mommy. No child should have their innocence lost or even paying the cost. And no child should go without. No child should be the victim of blame, and no child should have to live and shake, and no child should be calling their names or living with haddock and pain, or always having rainy days. And no child should have to run away because of problems they face. Just take a pencil and erase the rest things that try to break your heart. Stay focused and hold on, God, my child, because I'm just a child, and even though I smile, I can't let the pain show in my eyes, because deep down inside, I cry, I cry, I cry, I cry. Because I'm just a child, and even though I smile, I can't let the pain show in my eyes, because deep down inside, I cry. Thank you.
How do I follow that?
Yeah, Conan, Conan, you're closing it up here.
The moment I get to speak, you do that to me. No, but I just want to say thank you, Councilors, and thank you panelists for showing up. I was reluctant to speak because I felt like our executive director, Ed Powell, did an excellent job representing our program. But I also wanted to talk about the young people that we're dealing with today. Our community's hurting people. I hate to get extra serious about this, but our community's really hurting, and our young people are involved in some things that are very harmful to our community and our way of living. And we can beat the politicians up and beat up on the police, and we can do that, but that's what we always do. You know, we come to these forums and we talk about what they're not doing, but we own that power. Anything that has ever happened positively in our community was created and done by the people. It was always supported by elected officials and by officers, but it was positively done by us. We have to get to a place where we're not vilifying folks that are in office and vilifying folks that are in position to support us, and we got to start taking a level of ownership within. Because when we do that, we become a more powerful community as a result. There's some great work that's being done. I don't want to act like all is lost. There's some collaborative efforts that are happening. The last festival that happened, the Jamaican Festival, the reason why No Violence was created was the work that was done collaboratively between organizations and the police. That was an effort. That was people working together. Those are the things that's going to help us be better as a community. We have to think about that. And when we come up in these rooms, let's figure out what we can do to be better versus focusing on what we don't have. Because we can do that all day. There's a lot of social ills and unjust that is going on in our community. But if we come here solution oriented, we'll be better as a result. Thank you.
Alright. Well, that's as good a way to close it up as ever. I'd like to thank everyone for being here. This hearing is adjourned.